I'm going to call this meeting to order at 1:00 PM. Today is May 13th, 2019. We are in the Joe and Idalat Junior Teacher Education Center and this is a special called Business Meeting. At this time, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance of the Flag and I'm going to ask Dr. Rendell to please lead us.
Please join me in the pledge.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united people, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, we need to adopt the orders of the day, so I need a motion to adopt.
I make a motion to adopt the orders of the day. A second.
Mrs. Rosario and Mrs. Maronborg, would you like to speak to your motions?
No ma'am.
No ma'am.
Any other discussion? Nope? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Okay. Because this is not a typical business meeting, at this time, I'd just like to say welcome to everyone that is watching and here in the audience today. As we address the selection of our interim superintendent, this board will make a decision of great magnitude. Our decision today will have a direct impact on continued success of the Indian River County School District. Today's agenda will go as follows. We will begin with an opportunity for public comment. Once we conclude public comment, I'll ask individual board members for their comments. Once each board member comments, I'll ask if there's any additional. We'll do this three times and we'll let this process run until there are no further discussion. Once discussion is concluded, I will entertain a motion. The motion could read, "I move the board to offer the position of Superintendent of Schools to..." fill in the blank with the name of desired person, "and authorize the chair and council to begin contract negotiations." Then with a motion and a second, I'll ask again for individual board members for final And then I'll call for a vote. If the vote passes, we will have identified our interim superintendent pending contract negotiations. If the vote fails, I'll ask for another motion. We'll continue until vote passes and we've identified our interim superintendent. Then the next steps in the process will begin. First, the selected candidate will need to satisfactory complete all pre-employment processes as set forth by Indian River County Schools and Florida statutes. Second, once the board has identified a majority vote of one candidate of our candidates, contract negotiations may begin. It is within this contract that a starting date and compensation package will be agreed upon. Third, once a contract has been tentatively agreed upon, it will come before the board for an official final approval. We are hoping to have this concluded by tomorrow night's 6:00 PM business meeting. And the fourth, transition plan will be made for working with Superintendent Dr. Rendell and for assuming the responsibilities of Superintendent of Indian River Schools for the new interim, starting officially on May 25th. Are there any questions for the board members before we proceed with public input selection section of our agenda today? No? Alright. So at this time, we do have three individuals that have signed up to speak. We have Mr. Bob Awater, then Dr. Warrior, and then after Dr. Warrior, we have Mr. Tony Brown. Thank you for attending our workshop today.
Hey, good afternoon, Madam Chairman, members of the school board. For the record, my name is Bob Awater. I was previously chairman of the School Board Audit Committee and also speaking in behalf of my wife Nancy, who sat in the audience this morning and did the interviews. My wife worked for 18 years in Great Valley School District, which was ranked in the top 10 of the 500 school districts in the state of Pennsylvania and where our kids, both of our children, went to school. You had three good candidates this morning, but in my wife's and I's view, Susan Moxley stands out. The district needs someone who can hit the ground running at a very crucial time in the year when you still don't have a budget passed. At this point, I know it's being worked on. And also, the school needs, the school district needs to get ready for the start of the new school year in August. What appealed to us was that Dr. Moxley articulated a well-thought-out operational framework to get the district ready for start of school in August. He said, "Look at it from the perspective of, you have day one, school, district is open for business. What do I have to do on day minus five, day minus 10, day minus 50, and so forth?" And particularly in an interim situation, you kind of have to look at this more as a project to get this accomplished and that's the way I would approach it, the different projects I worked on in the private sector. And as someone who has had issues in the past with the way financial matters have been done in the school districts, such as tax anticipation notes, I really liked her view that she feels that she has to have intimate knowledge of the budget. I think that's very important. Clearly, the CFO and the finance department has to build the budget, but the school superintendent owns it. And in particular, because we all know in our tax bills, most of our taxes go to the school district, not to the town where I'm vice mayor or to the county or other things. Another thing that appealed to us was that she had, at least my understanding, was that she had previously developed plans for superintendent transition, so I think that's important. And last but not least, she laid out a communications plan to try to create more trust and transparency, not only with the school board, but I thought importantly with parents and with the community as well in terms of reach out. So for those reasons, we would recommend that you appoint Dr. Moxley as interim school superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Warrior? Thank you for coming.
I watched all of it this morning, so I didn't just drop in off the street and decide to put my word in. I'm going to make it really hard for you, I guess, because my recommendation is different than Mr. Awater. I respect him. I don't know him personally, but I know the work he's done in the district. And I commend you guys. I mean, this has not been easy. I appreciate that you realize how significant it is, even if it's only an interim position, that we get the right person in the position. I would recommend Dr. James Parla as the person I consider, and for a number of reasons. I felt that he's got more than just the educational piece. I think he's got the private sector. I think he has some skill sets that we may not necessarily always have had before in our superintendent. He said, you know, some key words, one of the things, and it's kind of weird, but he said something about humor. And I'm not a laugh type person. I don't laugh a lot, most of those who know me around here. But it was kind of nice to hear him talk about trying to diffuse situations and work with it. One of the things I was disappointed in, is I tried to do this, I'm not going to talk about what I didn't like about any candidate. I'll just stick with what I did with Parla. But my one concern I had overall was the equity issue. And no one has, I mean, you know, it was a very weak-at-best plan for equity issues. And our school district is rapidly changing. We're starting to have racially identifiable schools and with all the kinds of concerns that that can cause. We've had an achievement gap, you know, forever. And although I didn't read the, one thing I think was that Dr. Parla was the one that revealed, "This is the skeleton you may pull out of my closet about the shooting range and the bullets and things." What I found about him was not that. I found things about the others, but what I found about him was the fact that he approached his district in Hamilton, which is not primarily a minority issue, but he saw that de facto segregation was beginning to happen in the schools. And he sort of brought that forward as a superintendent. I mean, even the courts would say, "Oh, de facto, you can't do anything about it. Let's just brush over it." But I really respected him in looking at that as an issue. And he approached it in a very measured way, maybe not as radical as I would like to see. But I would, again, as I said, suggest Dr. Parla. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Mr. Brown? Thank you. Thank you for being in here.
Good afternoon. Anthony Brown, president of the local NAACP. First to commend you ladies for this morning. I sat through the total interviews and to be pushed for time as you were, it wasn't extensive. It could have been, but you did pretty good with what you had to work with. I did a grading thing and I'm like Dr. Warrior. After I walked away and looked at myself, I had to grade Dr. Parla. Based on some things, Dr. Schiff kept putting equity out there. And ladies, I need you to understand that right now, the biggest problem facing our district is based on that DSEG order. Once you take care of some of those issues, you will get rid of a lot of other issues that are incumbent upon our district. We need to go in there and be strong, hard, and effective looking at equity, looking at the DSEG order, how to come up to par, how to get past ourselves and realize what we do for one child is for all. And as Dr. Schiff asked a question, no one except Dr. Parla gave a definitive answer. But he came and he kind of, I think in his off cue way, he came up later on, "Well, I did some stuff with the DSEG order, but I'm not going to tell you." As if he got some stuff that he could use to bring us into the 21st century. With that being said, I think the other ones were good. I think in one case, we don't have to fish in the same pond again. And I think with one of the persons, they were good in a lot of ways, but I don't think you had enough time to vet them to understand that. I have about nine news articles on one of them that were not so formidable, especially when you're dealing with issues with color and administrative issues. So with that being said, I thank you ladies and gentlemen, ladies for what you did this morning. It was awesome. And the last thing I would like to say is, for all your efforts working with the NAACP, Dr. Rendell, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. So that concludes our citizen input. Was there anyone else that wanted to speak that didn't sign up? Okay. This is a little separate, this different arrangement that we normally have. At this time, I'm going to open this up for individual board comments. And like we reviewed, we will do a round of comments and after the third round of comments, we'll, I'll ask for a motion. And so at this time, I would like to... Mrs. Maronborg, you're at the end. Do you mind going first?
No, not at all.
Okay. There were two things that I specifically asked. You know, we divided it up and several of us wanted some similar topics, so I appreciate everything that everybody agreed to say and ask. The two points that I kept bringing back up, like towards the end, were about representative organizations, which I was keying in on because I was waiting to see who was going to talk about unions and negotiations. And that did come up in one or two of the responses, but not as much as I had hoped for. The other thing that I brought up was profile and demographics of the districts they'd forked in. And one of the reasons I brought that up is I did extensive research on all three candidates this weekend. I called all the numbers that I could call and contacted everyone that I could speak to, as well as I'm sure you did. But I went through all their data from all their districts and I formulated, because I like to do this, got all the data from basically whether or not they met AYP, whether or not they had good standing in their district, was in an A or B district. Now, one of the candidates wasn't in Florida, so they don't grade it that way. They grade it with good standing, requiring academic progress, needs improvement, year one, year two, requiring corrective action, planning for restructuring, etc. Two of the candidates had districts that did have a lot of diversity. One did not in his first, and it's Dr. Parla, in his first two superintenances. So that's why I asked that question. And then he brought it up because I could not find the information I needed from his last one. And so he brought up the information about Hamilton Township, which he said was a little bit higher diversity. He did bring up some good points, so I was glad to hear that because that was stuff that I really couldn't find out there on the internet quickly over the weekend with everything that we had to do and the amount of time we had to do it in. However, I did put some points of each one. They're all three spectacular candidates. I think I could work with all three of them. Dr. Moxley had a very calm disposition and was approachable. Her experience was impressive, especially in Florida. She's still actively involved, which I thought was important. She has a business background and some DSEG experience. 90-day action plan was impressive that she created that to bring to the table. She made a comment that she works side by side, especially with finance people. She has experience with tight budgets, wants a higher fund balance, but didn't discuss the negotiations and unions as much as I'd hoped, I don't think at all. Graduation rates, I looked up all their graduation rates as well. She had made some gains in her graduation rate as she was superintendent over the years and it got to 84%. And her school was a CNB district almost all the way. Mrs. Yost has experience with negotiations with representatives and mentioned that. She has a fluid transition plan idea. She's action-oriented. I could see that through what she was talking about, mentioned that a couple of times. She suggested mentors for supporting students and discussing moving high-performance students as well. And worked, mentioning working directly with FSBA and our district, addressing deficiencies in the budget process, collaborative and open door. DSEG order experience, I already mentioned that. Servant leadership was another term she brought up. Utilizing our Teacher of the Years, I thought that was good. Open communication with charters. And I put down her graduation rate when she was superintendent was 86.8% and it was a CNB district. Dr. Parla has lots of experience. He has a business background. He teaches classes for Columbia, which is impressive, has an MBA, familiar with FEFP and Red Book, especially without Florida experience, which I thought was important because that was a big concern of mine, is that he has never been a superintendent in Florida, but yet mentioned that he uses the FEFP and Red Book. Mentioned that the fund balance is important to maintain, but not too high, and there's a good reason for that. So I'm glad that he pointed that out. His transparency with accessibility was mentioned several times and he balanced a nine-person board. Wow. I can't imagine. So his last experience did have a diverse population, which his others did not. So when I started research, I was a little concerned that he didn't have those types of experiences, but then he mentioned he did. And his school districts were in good standing. However, ESC and African-American data for the last couple of years was a concern. So you're going to see that across the board in other things as well with other districts, but those were just good standing, good standing, good standing, and then in the last couple of years, there were some concerns. So I just wanted to point out kind of a little bit in the nutshell of the research that I had found on them.
Thank you.
I thought that we had really great candidates as well. I really, my notes are pretty much the same as probably most of you here, all of you, if I may take that chance to say. But I suppose we could, I'm trying to figure out where I should start. I'm going to probably start with Dr. Parla. Dr. Parla, I found also to be personable. He handed us a folder with some information for us to follow up. Likewise, Dr. Moxley's 90-day plan was really something I was not expecting. I spent some time during our break going through that action plan and I just wanted to mention some things in this plan that I thought were pretty impressive. In the first few paragraphs, something that I found, and I'm also, when I do my own writing or reporting out, I've always been one to pay attention to certain pronouns. And something that I found in her writing, other pronouns, we and our. So she has, I'm going to read it because I think it's important enough. "Superintendent's guiding principles serve as the foundation for the way we work throughout the district. These principles serve as the compass for myself and all professionals throughout our organization. It is my strong desire that our district strives to be a learning organization that is high-performing. I find that these pronouns represent already team, a team focus. There's leadership, there's ownership, there's a personal investment, there's togetherness there where there aren't the pronouns of I and me and my, and I find that that's extremely important." Something else that I got from her 90-day plan, which we did not ask candidates to do, but she did, was she provided us with some guiding principles, which were her top three goals. Leading with integrity, united in purpose, and committed to excellence. All of those are, in some ways or another, they tie already into our strategic plan and our district goals, so I find that that is something that we should not ignore. Moving into the actual plan itself, we have areas of student achievement, instruction, communication, climate, and culture, relationship building, transparency, financial management operations, strategic planning, of course, and accountability, up until day one of opening school. I'm not even sure we would have to, I mean, everything that we as a board have talked about are our needs, are in this plan. We, everything from underperforming schools, visiting schools, where am I? Meeting with business leaders, key representatives, organizations, faith-based organizations, holding a board retreat to establish a way of working and communicating protocols, reviewing our budget and our finances, meeting with staff, district leaders and staff across the entire district, community members, families. There is mention here of being thorough, being as thorough as to really dive into the desegregation order and monitor the action plan to move our district forward, progressing towards unitary status. And of course, ensuring that we will have a successful opening school year for the school year 2019, 2020. But something else with Dr. Moxley that I found to be a high quality is that she has business experience, human relation experience in her leadership in schools, and vocational tech training, which we, that's something that this board has been pretty consistent, you know, pushing alternative education and making sure that we have these opportunities available for students that are not for the, not only for the traditional college-bound students. So her personal experience in that area, I think, would be pretty beneficial for us. I, Dr. Parla, I thought was, has a wealth of experience all the way around. Other than the fact that he did not physically have Florida experience, do I think that Dr. Parla will be able to start day one? Sure. Is that the route that this board wants to go in? If we had Dr. Parla, I don't have any doubt that he would, that he wouldn't step up to the plate and do as great a job as I think, you know, Dr. Moxley. the plate and do as great a job as I think, you know, Dr. Moxley may do. I loved his sense of humor. I loved the, the connection that he was making with each individual person. I think at a, at a, at a time where our district is experiencing and will continue for hopefully not too long, some healing, I think Dr. Parla might, might actually fit that mold. But nonetheless, I, a positive on Dr. Parla is his love for school finance. Even though he has been out of the state, his, you can, you can hear the passion in, in that, you know, aspect of his experience. Mrs. Yost, I thought, also had a wealth of experience behind her. She did not have as many years of superintendency experience as the other two candidates. That doesn't rule her out, but I, I am leaning more towards Dr. Moxley and Mrs., I mean, Dr. Moxley and Dr. Parla.
Dr. Schiff? I'm going to try not to repeat what everybody else has said and see what else I can bring to the table. Because of course I have long lists and, and I'll speak to kind of overall what struck me about each candidate, a few things that came out in my checking references, and I want to respond to the comments of a couple of people in the audience because I checked into that. What I particularly liked about Dr. Moxley is she, she clearly could, she was prepared to answer any question we gave her. She was not flustered by anything we said. She had a clear answer. She was on the ball. She was connected, and I got the sense of confidence from her. I felt confident in her responses. I felt confident in her preparation. I felt confident in how she was able to address any of the answer, any of the questions that we asked. She was direct. She was articulate. I felt confident in her capacity to hit the ground running and run our school board. I would have liked time for more detail on her responses in the areas of equity and school safety. And thank you, Mrs. Rosario, for that question on school safety. I'm kind of surprised I missed that, so thank you for, for asking that because that was a really good question.
You're welcome.
And I'm, yeah, thank you for asking that. I would have liked to have seen more on equity. I want to respond to some of the concerns because I've seen that information too, and it concerned me about a previous issue that had come up under Dr. Moxley's tenure in Lake County. And what I learned about it was that there was, there was a history to that, and there was a history to shakeup in the district, and there was a history to what had happened with the person who, who basically sued the school district and, and said that there were issues of equity and that he was demoted because of issues of equity and because of his speaking out to the school board. And what I heard in checking references and getting other information on that was that there was, that, when Dr. Moxley came in, she was asked by the school board specifically to evaluate every single person in the district. She was actually asked everybody to apply for their jobs and get a really clear sense of who was in what job and who was qualified for, for what. And it turned out that that person had had some issues, was actually not, as I heard it, I'm only repeating what I heard, was not as responsible in their job, was not showing up. And while he was taken out of the position of principal and, and put into being a teacher, he was actually replaced with an African-American principal in that school. So that allayed some of my concerns about the equity issues in it. I checked, as did Mrs. Baronborg and I'm sure others, references, heard that she had a very close relationship with her CFO, and that her CFO had actually, if needed, offered to be of support if she should be selected to come to this district, which was nice, and that they had had a very close and a really good working relationship when she was there, which I appreciated. Overall, I thought she was really well-qualified. She'd be a great choice. I felt like there was probably not an issue that we could throw at her that she either had not already confronted or would have a way to address. So I appreciated that. I liked Ms. Yost as well. I, I liked everybody. And what I particularly liked about her was that she, I, I, my sense from her was that as Mrs. Baronborg is brought up, she was a healer. And I got this also from people, I, when I checked her references, she came into the district and was able to establish relationships, was able to heal relationships, sued, that people trusted her, that she established transparency. What else did I have in here? I'm trying to speak fast and I should slow down. Her, her, people who had worked with her spoke very highly of her and, and spoke about ways in which she had brought cohesiveness to the district and to the board. Her experience, though not as long in, in the superintendent role, stretched such a breadth of from pre-K all the way through assistant deputy interim and permanent superintendent that I thought she brought such a, she also, I believe it was her who mentioned her first role was as, as an ESE teacher. So her experience felt like she really understood the gamut of what it takes to be at a, to have walked the walk of the people for whom she will be responsible in a district. So I appreciated that about her. I was, I would have liked to have heard more about her positions on equity, about some of her answers on transparency and school safety I would have liked to have had time to hear more about because I didn't feel like I, I got quite enough. And I have to admit that her, she has, she has so much practical experience that I value, and I really appreciate that each of the other candidates also brings a PhD to the table. So direct academic experience as well as practical experience and how those come together. With Dr. Parla, I agree with, I think it was Mrs. Rosario who said, no, I think it was Mr. Brown who said, or Dr. Warrior, don't remember. Somebody said, he brings experience from a broader swath than simply what we are used to in Florida. He brings to the table experience from a number of other districts and other ways of looking at things that we perhaps have not yet explored. And brings up, brings a really fresh perspective to us in that, in ways we are often used to thinking a particular way here, either in Indian River County or in Florida generally. So I really, I listened closely to what he said and how he said it about how he addressed certain issues from a context that was different than ours. And I appreciated that because it's a bit of a fresh take on what we do. He was also the only one who gave, what I really appreciated, he was the only one who gave me a very specific answer on equity. He said, here was a problem I identified, here was what I learned was the problem, and here's what we did about it. And I really appreciated that specificity. And he also in his resume has, he's written on equity, he's addressed equity. So I feel like he of the three had the best grasp on that. He has terrific experience. I wonder how he would be a fit in our district, and I'm not sure. So I'm looking forward to having our, our open discussion on that. And I got the sense that as we got to know him, there would be a certain warmth and humor that would exude that we weren't able to get in just an hour of an interview. So I'm not going to state a, where I'm leaning or a preference right now, and rather just leave it to, those are my initial takes, and I'm sure I'll have more as we continue to discuss.
Okay. Mrs. Stolz?
Thank you very much, Mrs. Zork. I just wanted to give an overview of how the interviews went today quickly, because not everyone may be aware of how the questions were, were put together. Each individual board member was able to take a certain area. If you watch our workshop where we discuss going through the interview process, you can learn a little bit more about that. And board members, Mrs. Zork asked for an overview and asked some general questions, and then Mrs. Rosario took instructional leadership. I asked some questions with business and finance. Mrs. Baronborg asked regarding board, staff, and community relationships. And Dr. Schiff asked about performance accountability. Each individual board member was able to use the questions that the FSBA had provided or they could submit their own questions, use their own questions. I chose to use my own questions today, and most of my questions were really regarding the transitional piece. We are currently looking for an interim superintendent, so while I think all three candidates are incredibly qualified to serve as a superintendent, I was really listening for those pieces today that were going to be directly focused at how do you create a, a work plan for a six to twelve-month period of time with the goal being getting the school district moving in the right direction, building the budget, opening schools, and then really setting up the next permanent leader for success in our district. So I thank my fellow board members for their questions today. I think we got some really good answers from three candidates who have a lot of different experience. I enjoyed Dr. Parla's experience that he shared with us as a board member. What an interesting perspective for someone to have regarding the work that we do as board members. I thought Dr. Moxley and Ms. Yost both brought some fantastic hands-on practical experience working within Florida school districts. I have shared before and I will share again that I feel that that experience for an interim superintendent is invaluable right now considering where we find ourselves in the budget-building process and opening schools. And as I continue to move through this process with the board, that will be at the forefront of my thinking in, in my selection or my vote for an interim superintendent.
At this point, I feel like we probably were going to go around again.
I'd love to hear what you.
I, I was very impressed with all the candidates. I feel like we, no matter what decision we make today, it's not going to be a wrong There were strengths that I thought some had that some didn't have, but then the other had strengths that the other one didn't have. So I, I, I'm leaning toward a preference and I'm torn between one or the other, but I, I'm still, I, I would be happy with any of the three. So I don't know, at this point, should we begin the conversation about which candidate to take, take off the table? And then we, we try to talk about the, the positives of the, the last two candidates?
That's a good idea.
Would that be something that we're interested in?
That's a good idea.
I went with Mrs. Baronborg first last time. Do you want me to start with Mrs.?
Sure, somebody else can start, please.
Okay.
I, I already said that my top two is Dr. Parla and Dr. Moxley. So I guess I can start that off.
Okay. Mrs. Zork? Rather than going through this process, perhaps it would be appropriate for someone to make a motion for, now that we've heard discussion, and then we could move through the process in that way.
Are we ready to go there? Or we still want some more discussion? Okay.
I'd like to talk a little more.
Okay. So, Dr. Schiff? Are you ready for your top two?
Probably, and I am reluctant. Because I actually, I think I agree with Mrs. Rosario, and I'm a little reluctant. What I liked about Ms. Yost was I, I, I felt a kind of like she could come in and ease some of the, she would have a way of bringing people in the district together. And I'm a little, and, and I, it, it, it's kind of a vibe thing. And I'm a little reluctant to give that up, but I know I've got to give something up. So I, I think I, I agree though that I, for different, for completely different reasons, actually, I would go with Doctors Moxley and Parla.
Thank you. Mrs. Baronborg?
I'd like to hear from you too. I'm so on the fence right now.
Are you, you ready?
Yes, I've shared before that I believe that having experience in Florida as a superintendent of schools is advantageous for us in this process where we find ourselves in, in right now. And while I respect Dr. Parla very much, and I think he has some wonderful qualities that would be, that may be good for us in a long-term superintendent perhaps, when we're not necessarily in this transitional time, I will be, I will be supporting Ms. Yost or Dr. Moxley for the position of interim superintendent.
All right. So my, the two candidates that I am leaning toward are Dr. Parla and Dr. Moxley.
This is difficult. I do have more knowledge, of course, of one of the candidates, only because she was my supervisor for five years. So I do, I have seen her on a day-to-day basis and how she interacts and what she's done kind of behind the scenes, so trying to eliminate that knowledge to be fair to everybody. I was impressed with Dr. Parla. I was super impressed with Dr. Moxley. So, yeah. I'm having a hard time with this, only because I wish, I wish I knew them all about the And I don't think we can go wrong with any of them. I, I, like you, wish we heard more about equity. I wanted to hear more about transparency and how we can put documents out there for people to see like other districts have, but we didn't get those questions answered because we had such a short time. I think in all respects, looking down at who can start day one and move us quickly, I think it's Dr. Moxley. I think Mrs. Yost could probably do that as well, and I think Dr. Parla would be well-versed in that, although I felt like he would take, his learning curve would be a little longer at the beginning. I think overall, for a long-term fact, he would be pretty good for us. So I, I'm, I'm hesitating just picking two. That's why I really wanted to listen to what you had to say because I see each one of them leaning us in a good direction differently. And I, I just feel like coming in with a plan, boom, and handing it to us, that's something that, you know, I like to do. I go into an interview, it's, you know, come with a solution. Don't just say, yeah, I think I could do this, I think I could do this. Come with a solution and a plan. And so I really like the fact that, you know, we had a solution and plan. Now, ninety days is three months, and we've got, we're looking at six months to a year for someone, so I'm hoping that we can go a little quicker than that, but I appreciated the plan.
I'm waiting for her. So you're for sure for one right now?
Dr. Moxley and probably Mrs. Yost.
Okay. Mrs. Zork, may I make a comment? I just wanted to share something that I shared today when we were talking. I was impressed with the ninety-day action plan, and when I did check references for Dr. Moxley, one of the things that was brought up to me several times was the fact that she had worked with her staff to create a transitional plan for the superintendent that came in after her. And that to me was very important. So the idea that she would help a new superintendent coming in with a ninety-day action plan to really start and be successful and to start in the right direction, I think, was very attractive to me. When you're ready for a motion, Mrs. Zork, I'd be happy to make one.
Okay. So at this point, we can go into round three of discussions, but based on what I'm, I'm seeing the goal today, I think we've all agreed that whoever we select, we want to collectively be in agreement, not, we don't want a divided board going forward in, in this. When I look at this, I see clearly there is one candidate that all of us have had, had positive feedback on, and, and then the other two, it's divided. So at this time, do you want to continue? So at this time, do you want to continue conversation, or are we ready for a motion?
I'm ready for a motion.
I move that the board offer the position of superintendent of schools to Dr. Susan Moxley and authorize the chair and council to begin contract negotiations.
I second.
An interim superintendent, excuse me, I'm sorry. I read the script, interim superintendent.
Okay.
Pending.
Okay. Okay. Okay, let me find my script here.
Could you read that motion back?
I move that the board offer the position of interim superintendent of schools to Dr. Susan Moxley and authorize the chair and council to begin contract negotiations.
Okay, we have Mrs. Justice with the, the motion. We have Mrs. Rosario with the second. Is there, would you like to speak to your motion?
Yeah, I, I think Dr. Moxley will lead us well. I was extremely impressed with her today, and I'm happy that the board is able to come together in this decision, it seems, and move forward as a district.
Mrs. Rosario?
Likewise, I, I don't have any reservations. I'm, I'm glad that we are unanimous in this, that we're all on the same page. I was very impressed with her interview. I was very impressed with her resume and her cover letter when it came in. I spoke with her previous, as you all know, previous to our workshop the other day, and, and again, I was very intrigued. I think that Dr. Moxley will do a great, will do great things for us within these, this, you know, transition time, and, and I just look forward to, to beginning to work with her.
Okay. I'd like to say it's nice to see that we all agree on this so quickly, but I also like to extend a thank you to all of those that came, that care enough to come here and want to give input and want to help us with this decision, but also to the candidates for all their hard work over Mother's Day weekend to prepare for an interview like this. And I appreciate the people that, when I picked up the phone and called them, they actually called me back and were, were willing to talk over a holiday weekend. So I, I appreciate the fact that people care enough and know that we're under such a tight time crunch that they were able to give us the information that we needed. So I'm happy to move forward. I, I know this is just an interim superintendent position, so as we look forward to putting forward our plan for creating what we're going to do for a timeline for our superintendent position, I would hope that we'd be able to have more time to devote longer interviews, to get more background checking, to get more input from our community, because I think that's important. Also, sometimes we find out information and, you know, background checking and things that aren't made available to other people, you know, they probably didn't have the opportunity to call board members in New Jersey and New York and Lake County, and that's a great insight to get that information, so I appreciate that. And thank you to the Florida School Board Association for helping us with this.
Dr. Schiff? Or, do you have any comments? No? I just want to say, I didn't really have much to say, because I felt like, no matter what candidate we chose, we were gonna, we were choosing the right candidate. I, I'm very happy that we were able to come together, and it sounds like we're gonna unanimously vote for the same person, so I'm very encouraged by that. At this time, let's see, this, I'm not used to this script. I'd like to call for a vote. Do I have to individually, or is it all together? All right. At this time, I need a, we're gonna vote on the board offering the position of superintendent of schools to Dr. Susan Moxley. Super, excuse?
Interim.
Interim, sorry. Interim. Superintendent of schools to Dr. Susan Mockley, Moxley, and authorize the chair and the council to begin contract negotiations. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Five zero. Congratulations, Dr. Susan Moxley. We look forward to working with you. At this point, as a reminder, the next steps are contract negotiations will begin, the selected candidate will complete all pre-employment processes necessary. We are hoping to have this concluded by tomorrow night's meeting to bring before the board for approval, so thank you, Mrs. DiAgresta, for getting that together. Upon, upon approval of the contract, transition plans will be made for working with Dr. Rendell and for assuming the responsibilities of the interim superintendent of Indian River County Schools. Do we need to vote on contract negotiations, or is it just?
You already did.
Okay, okay.
You'll, you'll vote on the actual contract Tuesday, at Tuesday's board meeting.
Okay, because it was, it was divided here on the, the agenda. No further business? Okay. All right. And we do have superintendent's report on here, but he is, Dr. Rendell's gonna save that for tomorrow night?
I do not have a report at this time.
Okay. No, no discussion items. With that, we're gonna adjourn this at one fifty-one.